This is our Ware County Board of Commission work session Monday, May the eighth at three thirty P. M. Before we start the meeting, let's uh I might ask Mr. Burst if he would say a prayer for us.
Get us geeked up. Our head father in the name of Jesus, so we thank you, oh God, for this day. We pray, God, to you a blessing, oh God, that we deliverate the business of this city and the county. We pray, God, you look upon all the inhabitants of Ware Cross and Ware County. And we pray, God, you just continue to bless this nation, oh God. We know that there are things going on right now, Lord, that we may not understand, Lord, but you are still in control. And Father, we pray, God, you give us the right decisions to make, oh God, concerning the matters that come before us today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Glad you laid it.
Gladly.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's uh, let's do a roll call. Mr. Burst.
Present.
Mr. Pope.
Present.
Mr. Lucas here.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
Yeah, he is. Okay. We don't have a G. S. speakers on the agenda, so we're gonna go to the items, agenda items. Let's go to a discussion on this A twenty twenty-three C. D. B. G. Conflict of Interest Statement.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. This is required by federal law that the commission, any appointees, agents of the county, consultants, and various ones have to state if they or if you would have a conflict of interest in the C. D. B. G. project, the paving and drainage work there in Bennett subdivision, which is the the Balking Bird, I think it's Balking Bird Lane, Cardinal Drive, and Rin Avenue. And that could be pretty much from the standpoint of maybe owning property. I have a is it immediate family that owns property there on those on those streets or roads?
By definition, they
Okay. Yeah. So anyway, it's if you do, you just have to make 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 it known. And if you do have a conflict of interest, you have to stay out of discussions and voting on the subject. That's all it is.
How about the construction part of it?
Well, it's um, it hasn't been bid yet. We well, it hasn't been awarded yet either. This the C. D. B. G. application, grant application will be submitted, I believe, in June, first part of June. And then we should know sometime around September, October of this year whether we've been awarded or not. So that's still in effect, but we have to get all these preliminaries out of the way. So it goes, it has to be part of the the application that we turn in. And it's not us that's doing it. The South Georgia Regional Commission is preparing the application.
Okay.
So in the meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, Jennifer, in a meeting, each one of you would have to state whether you have a conflict of interest or not. And then that becomes part of the minutes, and we put those copies in the application. That's all.
That's okay. That'd be in in the minute when we're voting.
I was, I've always put this in here so you'll be aware that when we have this one on the regular meeting agenda, that you would have to say that you have a conflict or don't have a conflict.
Well, this is just to get the grants. It's not to
That's correct.
Do the work yet because we don't know whether we got the grants yet.
To show that there's no conflict when we turn the application in.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion on it? No, I'll just carry that one over.
Okay, um, the one under Tab B, there's three of them that are associated with each other. Tab B is the actual authorization to submit the application. I mentioned that the Southern Georgia Regional Commission is preparing the application. And this really just authorizes the the Regional Commission to submit the application on Ware County's behalf.
Okay. That would also, if any of us were owned any land or anything in that area, then we wouldn't be able to vote on that.
That's correct. Yes, sir. And the third one under Tab C
C.
is to approve a contract with the South Georgia Regional Commi- Commission to do the C. D. B. G. administration. There's reporting that has to be done, some financial reports, drawdowns to to have the money sent from D. C. A. They provide all that that whole service, and it comes out of the grant funds.
Okay. They'll do all the administration. They'll do it. Okay.
Have they finished it canvassing the area as far as getting the information for residents?
Yes, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the the surveys show there's roughly about seventy-five percent low and moderate income levels. So it qualifies.
Good. Is that still in Jamestown?
Yes, sir.
All right. Let's move on to D. We carry that one over to, we carry all three of those over to the regular meeting.
Yes, sir. Uh, this, under Tab D is a contract extension with Crowder Golf. This company does our disaster debris removal when it's needed during disasters. I think Jonathan's here. Jonathan, you want to speak to this just in case I have any questions? We, this is typically what we do every year.
How much they pay them?
We don't pay them. They do a service. We don't have to pay them.
This is a renewal of a contract for a one-year extension with Crowder Golf. This is a disposal company that that is required to be on Ware County's for Ware County's behalf for FEMA, when we have storms that are that create such a havoc in our community or in Ware County. We have a standby, it's a standby contract basically, that FEMA has approved. And once, if there's a declaration, FEMA declaration, and this contract is put into place, FEMA pays for for the the removal and disposal of the debris. At this point, we don't have anything in it. We don't have any money, no money involved in it. It's only if we choose to activate the contract. FEMA requires us to have a contract on hand for time with during inclement weather like a tornadoes to come through that really overwhelmed our public works where they couldn't clean it up, and we can fall back to this contract, have them to do it.
Okay. So if we don't have a contract, we won't get reimbursed for our calls?
Correct. No contract, you don't have, you don't get reimbursed.
Jonathan, I'm reading down the certificate of liability insurance. Y'all might want to update it because it's still got Elizabeth Hope as the
I I called in and told them about that, but I didn't get a new one back from them.
Okay.
But they're gonna, they will correct.
All right. Any more discussion on it? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll move that one over. All right, E. Resolution twenty twenty-three, Day fourteen, approve agreement with Y. M. C. A. for the Bailey Street Park pool operations.
Yes, this is an agreement supplied by the Y. M. C. A. for y'all's consideration. I know Jennifer made revision, I believe, with that agreement. I put a copy of her information there in front of you before the meeting. And I wanted to find out from you all, really, where at this point, we haven't secured security for the pool. I was told, and I think I mentioned earlier, that I was told that they couldn't devote, the city of Ware Cross couldn't devote a police officer to be there during operation if they had one patrol in the area. But the contract mentions that they would have to be on-site security before the Y. M. C. A. would provide pool management services there. And I hadn't heard anything beyond that at this point.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. I reached out to the city manager and talked with him, I think it was Thursday or Friday, and expressed our, you know, dilemma here. At the time, I think, said Chief Cox was on vacation, but he would be back, and he would try to get back with him first thing Monday to find out, you know, about the city's participation in providing, helping to provide security for the Bailey Street Pool. And so hopefully, we can get at least where they can kind of meet us halfway or something to try to help offset, you know, some of the costs. Because this is not a cost that was fighting it in, you know, when you start talking about recreation, you know, this is something that's come up, and this is the only way that the Y. M. C. I understand will provide live guards and management of the pool is that we have an officer at that location. And one of the things I want to ask, about an attorney maybe, and the last page, I believe, was where it says to provide a uniform Ware County deputy, I think. I don't know if we need to have that or just put, just that we'll provide security, you know, because it could be city police, you know, someone else.
I think there is one other version of this document also that has a few changes, so we'll make sure that we get you all that to look at. And we can certainly address that point and make sure that we just have, because I think it's the desire of the Y. M. C. A. just to have a, an officer there, not specific. That's their language that they provided, but we can certainly address that. Thank you.
Let me ask this question, like I said, because we're trying to make sure that we can go and get a pool open for the kids and all, and security seems to be the only, the last hurdle that we have to encounter. If you had a private security firm, security firm that was licensed and everything, would that be an option that we could look at?
I mean, the Y. M. C. A. is the ones that are making the demand for the security, and certainly from a cost standpoint, we expect that it would be most cost-effective to provide that either from the city, I suppose, and or the county, but really, the city is what we're planning on. But that certainly, if for some reason that doesn't work out, I think certainly you could look into that option. Now, they wouldn't necessarily be post-certified if you go that route, but sometimes those firms will hire off-duty. I mean, I, I let these gentlemen on the end speak to that even more than I do. Y'all, y'all tell us. So how does that work best? I know it depends on the firm, yeah.
It's like me and Steve were sitting here, Commissioner, we're just talking. If if they're not a sworn law enforcement officer and they're not certified, they will not have arrest powers.
Right.
And if arrest powers are needed, they themselves will have to dial nine-one-one. So then you get in back into the, what I talked about before, law enforcement's always responding instead of being preventative. And having them, having their presence is really what we need. We don't need them to respond to it. We need them there already. You know, because show of force is always your first line of defense.
And also, in addition to the manager, I didn't reach out to the commission that represents that district also to see, you know, get some input from them as far as, you know, being able to help the county on the security aspect of it. Because I let them know that, hey, we are taking care of the operation of the pool, but the security thing is something wasn't fighting it in. So I would hope that they could do that.
Did the police chief tell you that he could furnish off-duty police officers, right?
He did. He did for forty dollars an hour.
Forty dollars an hour. And I'm like the other commissioners, if this is a city pool, we've taken it on, they should be able to pay half of forty thousand dollars. They've got that much money. And Y. has said they're not opening unless there's guaranteed security. So to me, it's up to the city to come up with that.
What you saying, come up with half of it?
Because surely they can pay half.
Yeah. I think that would be, you know, fair if we could get them to do that.
Have y'all asked the city, would they do it?
Well, I talked with the manager, and he's spoken it with the chief police, and he said he gonna look and see what they can do as far as helping on the security aspect of it.
Let's say table it until we can find out something from them.
Well, it's getting close on the time too, you know, time is of the essence. And I think it would just be a travesty if we got to this point, and this is the last little hurdle, we couldn't deprive the kids and people in that area of access to the swimming pool.
Okay.
And I would like commissioners
Any more?
Mr. Manager, Madam, the reason I went up and talked with Major Hampton the other day about the forty dollar an hour deal, and the reason it's forty dollars an hour is because if you think about what a police officer makes, this and this being their off-time, I mean, this is theoretically them working their off-hours, you know, and that's why the charge is forty dollars an hour. And my understanding from him was anything they still hold a contract on right now, still twenty-five an hour, which is what it was when I was there, and I hadn't been there in eight years. And all the new contracts that they get will be forty dollars an hour from henceforth. I mean, and that's, to me, it's only right and fair because it is the police officers' off-time that are doing.
Well, there's probably a car involved too, ain't there?
They'll be in a squad car, and they'll also be in uniform. And, you know, when they're in that car and they're in that uniform, they're covered under the city's insurance and the city's liability. And that again is for the reason of the forty dollars an hour. I mean, they're not just throwing a price out there just to throw a price. It's a legitimate price.
That's the policy of the police department.
Right.
And the county charges thirty dollars an hour, and they don't have personnel to do it.
Right. They're shorthanded as it's, as they stand now.
Yep. I'll check, I was, I'll first go to, but yeah, I think that I'm thirteen officers right now. And so, and then also even with the school board, you know, and they are, they have, their officers are still obligated even during the summer to the thing that they have to do pertinent to the school system.
Okay. Any more discussion on it? Let's carry it over to the meeting. We'll vote on it. Okay. This resolution twenty twenty-three fifteen, approve purchase of weather tracking system for Recreation Department.
Samuel.
Yep, I got, but there he is. I couldn't see you, Lance. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Could I have known, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, standing before you today, that our weather system that we currently have, the RIG Department, is getting outdated. It's not tracking the weather, the lightning strikes as we need it to. Last two Fridays ago with Miracle League, and before it even came on, the siren, the storm was over us. And so it's important that we get our weather system updated for the safety of all our citizens who come out and regulate and regulate the party. And I do, we do have a representative here from WeatherSTEM who came in and talked to us and gave us a good overview. We looked at several different options, and I feel as if WeatherSTEM is the best one to go with. But I would like to call him up so he can give you all a lot more detail and insight of the weather system.
Thanks. I got one question. Does the school system got the same thing over there?
No, this new system have D. T. N. That system is only, from what I seen, just blink a light. And so we currently have a system where the siren will come on, and it's just, it's not working well. Now, we did have to go around the other day just to look at theirs to see if their system was going on so we can get our players off the field. So we don't want to have to run all the way across to the facility just to see if their system is going off, because they don't have a siren.
How big an area does this thing cover now? I mean, if you got the rig sitting right here, and the high school sitting here. Why couldn't the school system and the rig go in together and put one right there on the line, activate all of it around?
Yeah, I can't speak for the school system, but that's definitely an option. Definitely with the system that I'd like to get them, standing for y'all today to get approved. The WeatherSTEM, that company will work with different entities. They'll work with partnerships, City of Ware Cross, Ware County, school system for the lightning detecting. And WeatherSTEM, they offer so much more than just the lightning detecting. And so where they offer weather channel, live feed as well. So there's other moving components that'll help us at the RIG Department or somewhere else. If it was EMS, if they wanted a weather station, they could have a weather station.
So in other words, I can find out and watch my grandson play ball or something, know that I can pick it up on my telephone. If it turns on, they activate my telephone if I don't have the app.
Go online.
Right.
Online, get live feed, keep you updated. And I have a representative give you a lot more detail. I'd like to call him up so he can explain some of the features of their system.
Jonathan should know about that. I mean, this system, Jonathan, do you know about?
Yes, Mr. Jonathan, he's familiar with this system as well.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Jonathan, will you come over?
I would give you demo of this, but Wheel, a couple of months ago, our Jema area, forty-one county, had Wheel come over and present a demonstration of this product. And very well received amongst EMA directors in our area. I would look at the thing, the features that it has. It's, it's very innovative, a lot of things you can do with it. A lot of it's web-based in comparison to the D. T. N. They kind of same, but they're not the same, and I think you'll find out this is a little bit cheaper also than D. T. N. But we, we reviewed it. Everybody got good feedback for Wheel on the product. Some of our counties around us are purchasing this product, and I think it's a good fit for Ware County.
Is this stuff that you can use also?
Yes, it is.
Yep. What's that? Do y'all use on, I mean, I know y'all got one too, don't you?
I, I have D. T. N., which is limited to what I can do with it. It's not near the features that this has. And I will be able to move over to this product if if the commission chooses to purchase it and not have to use the D. T. N. product. But currently, that's all we have right now, that I have in EMA is the D. T. N. product, which is nothing near what he's offering to the campus.
Or do you have to pay for what you got?
It's about I think it's about fifteen hundred a year, two thousand, fifteen hundred a year.
So that would pay the yearly annual rate on this just probably.
I'm not sure what he's proposing for money. Of the annual, I mean, or the annual fee, but yeah, sure, it could, it could help offset that.
Twenty-six hundred dollars a year annual fee. Yeah, twenty-six hundred dollars.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Thanks for letting me come up and speak with y'all real quick. A little close to home here. My family's all from the Black Cherry, so it's a little sentimental of me to come over this way and see something. Really, what this does is this gives a live feed, live updating weather monitoring system for Ware County is what this is bringing in here. And that system is also open to the public. One of the big differences that you'll see based off of other ones is it's just a subscription base for your, for one or two administrators for your county. Every one of our pages is completely open to the public to see the weather, has forecasting data, the exact sensors, wet bulk globe temperature, which is a huge thing within athletics in Georgia now. Lightning detection and all of this can be set up all based for that, for your rec, your rec fields, your pools, community, EMA, EMS, Sheriff's Department, everybody else to have this access to this. And that comes with a customizable notification platform also. So on top of that, you're also having notifications sent out to these people to make lifetime decisions. All this data comes in at eight tenths of a second, so it's live feed versus if you're looking at your phone, you're seeing N. W. S. data or the Weather Channel on your app, this is stuff that's only updating every five, ten, or even twenty minutes. So there's a big difference, as we know, in South Georgia, North Florida, where I live now. Five, ten minutes, that's the difference between where a storm's at and where it is fifteen minutes from now, twenty miles down the road. So you're actually getting what you're experiencing right there. You're not getting it five minutes late. And any questions you have, I'm definitely free to answer that.
Mr. Chairman, so I appreciate your presentation and the RIG direct, and now, am I understanding just like, okay, if we approve this today, that the EMS can tie, pretty much tie into this? How does that work?
So that's correct. So it's a weather station, without having something to actually demonstrate. What will come with this, for what we have proposed for the RIG Department, is you'll get a actual weather station that will set forth out at the rec park along with what's called our blast system, which is an audible alarm. That blast system covers seven hundred yard radius. So with setting it up, whenever I took and mapped everything out of the rec park, you can set it up at the administrative building out there, and it covers that entire area based off of that one siren right there. All of this is solar powered, and also it runs off of cellular updating, so you don't have to worry about tying into a network. And it can send all of this information over through, and then EMA, EMS, and all of that can also access all this data because the main platform's open to the public, but also the notification platforms can all be added. We don't have a limit on administrators. So a representative from EMA, from EMS, from the Sheriff's Office can all have training in setting this notification platform up and have this data available and be able to use any day at any time.
So you said you went out to the RIG Department, mapped out the best place to put it. Getting back to what I brought up a while ago, putting it on the landline between the school and the rec, wouldn't seven hundred yards cover?
It actually wouldn't quite for where the school was at, when I looked at that before and mapped it out to get to those baseball It actually wouldn't quite for where the school was at. When I looked at that before and mapped it out to get to those baseball fields out at the one side. You're at six hundred yards from the administrative building to that backside of that baseball field right there. Is what the distance was when everyone mapped it out there. So if you put it back at the tree line there, you would start pushing that distance there of how much that would cover that point to be able to cover those fields at the school also.
Why couldn't you change your area of where you're gonna place it at?
Uh well, that was why I say if you move it to that tree line back there when I looked at that line, because I was, of course, anytime we do anything, we love the opportunity to partnership. And of what I saw from the map, if I set it, I guess that would be the, let's see here, that would be.
All right.
The western side tree line there, kind of towards that tree line there. If you set it over that way, you push it too far back from those baseball fields, which would be the eastern side there. If I remember how my map lays out right there.
You talking about the baseball fields at the rec?
Correct, baseball fields at the rec.
So we'd give up a little bit of our coverage if we covered all their.
Correct, if we covered all them, we'd give up some of the rec parks coverage.
Yeah, we definitely don't want that.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anything else? Anybody else? All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh Lance, what kind of system we we working on now? You say, are you using the one that we already have in place?
It's still, it is, yes, sir, it's still active, but it's not after it. It's active, but it's not after.
What does that cost us?
Nothing at this point.
Nothing?
So that, I guess, the one that we have out there, how long has it been out there?
Best I can research since the complex was built.
So that's.
And it has been moved around trying to get the the best.
So that system we have now is pretty much antiquated?
Yes.
And this is the new system and this is what's.
All right, thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Lance.
Carry it over.
Mr. Commissioner, sir, I think I did read on here that you said uh ARCA funding could be used towards this?
Yes, sir.
Bring it up, the meat knife. Let's go on to the G. Resolution for twenty twenty-three day sixteen. Approve the MOU with the Georgia Recreation Parks Association.
Chair. We stand again before you today with the MOU of understanding with the Jordan Recreation Park Association. Our department wrote a grant to GRPA for summer learning. And we was awarded fifty thousand dollar grant and we need to sign the MOU. One of the good things about this grant that our summer camp is currently doing a lot of the activities now. So this was a perfect fit for our department to write this grant to help our kids during the COVID time of missing school. To help curb some of the learning uh gaps so we can have some achievement gaps and fill those gaps that the kids. Have missed throughout the COVID years. Two, two of the things that we have to offer is accelerated accelerated learning, STEM esteem. Again, one of the good things about our programs that we have a certified teacher on staff and one of the things that we must have is a certified teacher. So we're not doing anything out of the norm. We just have the awesome opportunity to help fund our summer camp and some of the great. Uh learning activities that have to do this so.
What would this be taking place, Lance?
So the the activities will take place at both of our summer camp locations, Trembling Earth and Memorial Park. Again, both of our programs, they do the same exact things, may do it at a different time of the day, but both programs mirror each other. What one kid does at Memorial, they're gonna do it at uh Trembling Earth. This is just basically guidelines that we currently already doing. File drill, tornado drill, just, you know, some housekeeping keeping items. That we must do, that we're already doing, and this is the MOU of understanding. This is a great opportunity for us to use those funds.
And we already got the grant?
So the the grant, we have already been awarded the grant, but it's a reimbursement grant. It's a a month after.
Is the grant in form of funding?
It is in form.
How much is it?
Fifty thousand dollars.
How much will it cost to operate it?
We're budgeting it for fifty thousand dollars.
You have corner of this, you have to have teachers?
Yes, we we currently have teachers on staff. And thing about our teachers, they have to be certified teachers, so if we had a retired teacher, that teacher would have to come back and get licensed to actually do it. So we currently have licensed teachers on staff that work part time, so we're gonna move them over to help with this. Same thing with per professionals that have to be, some have to be licensed.
Thank you. I got one, one question. Since we got you up here and you've already been up here twice, I'm gonna throw another ball at you here. Uh I received a phone call from a couple of parents who were really concerned with the pricing of having the kids. Every day they go out there to practice at Trembling Earth, the pricing that they were being charged.
The prices of gate entry?
Not gate entry, of like using the field for practices. So they were being charged so much money every time they went out there to use the field for practices.
No one is being charged to currently use our. Our fields. If they are participant in Word County Rec Department and they play our ball, they're not being charged. We have travel team outside our facility, outside of Word County, and they're not participating, they will have to pay to get on our fields.
Okay, so that's the only one, not not ours, but.
And all our travel team parents or coaches, they are involved in our rec program. So when they come out and actually want to have practice, they're not getting charged. The traveling coaches will actually continue to use the fields once our season is over in two weeks. They still have access to our facility, but they are in our program.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're in our program, we're working with them.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it, Lance.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, anymore on that? And I was going to eight. Discussion and possible action concerning Board of Elections appointment. We got Carlos up there. This letter from Deborah Giddens, Deborah Giddens, Chairman of the Word County Republican Party concerning nominees for appointments to the Word County Board of Elections. Okay. Also attached is an email from Carlos Nelson concerning the appointment of the current Board of Ed. Board of Elections Board Member. Carlos, you come up and talk to us on that, explain it.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, um Commissioners, um you know, as a as a result of uh the new uh new local legislation four twenty-two. Um you know, the local parties, the local Republican Party and the Democratic Party, which we don't have a certified Democratic Party in Word County, so it's. Goes to the state Democratic Committee. Um it is up to them to nominate to you to appoint to the board, okay? Um the way it was before the governor signed the the legislation. It um the the political parties appointed to the board. They just made the appointments and then that was um, then they took their seat. So changes in the legislation saying that they must now nominate to you to make the appointments to the board. And so that's where we are now. It was just signed by the governor the last week of uh April. Um you know, normally we start the terms in Ju- July one. And so that's why um we're in that phase. Now we need to start looking at appointments so we can get um. The clerk of court and then get the judge um. Um the public judge to swear in to so they can start making uh decisions on behalf of the board. And so I, um I received an email from Ms. Giddens this morning or this, I think she sent it this weekend. Um I think it's the same letter that you have. You know, stating the the, you know, the uh the nominees for for the for their party. On behalf of Chairman Phillips, we emailed um the State Democratic Committee to let them know where we are locally. And that uh we'd be looking towards them to nominate also on behalf of the party. What that was done back end of March sometime, so you know, they're not on all timeframe, you know, I don't know, you know. They're actively working on it. Um I I wouldn't expect them to notify us. They probably would send something directly to the county. Um so I don't know, you know, if they're actively working on it or not. Uh also, um um the chairman that asked me, not the chairman, chairman Phillips, that asked me to send an email over here just to give a, just to give um. The county manager a recap of where we are right now. And so that's the email you have from our office. You know, stating that we have all four positions that will need be re-nominated and to be appointed. Um two positions will be for a four-year term. And then the other two positions will fill the unexpired terms, which would be for a two-year term. You know, that way we can keep two staggered, you know, you know, each of every two years, you know, staggered term. I don't know if the county manager wants to add in to that. I don't know if I left off anything.
Carlos, I've discussed this with Ms. Giddens and um Mr. Barnard. Legislation, the Burchett Act. Have four nominations from this Republican and Democratic. We have four nominations for each of two parties, right?
See, it's up to four. You can nominate up to four.
Four, but. But the bottom line is the commission does not have to appoint any of those nominations. They're only nominations, correct?
That's correct.
So just because we get nominations doesn't mean we're gonna point out of those lists. Correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
Cause the word going around that they, the the two parties get to appoint members like it used to be.
Well, they nominate.
Right.
You know, uh I was expecting, you know, the um the Democratic Committee to to nominate. Chairman Phillips just asked the Democratic Party of Georgia to re-nominate the two we have, you know, already serving. Um of this pretty young board and going into twenty twenty-four, trying to keep some continuity. And um I was expecting the uh Republican Party to nominate and they did, you know, they sent y'all the list of nominees.
Okay.
But all four members that we have on the now are willing to serve, to continue serving.
I would just like to say, you know, uh in reference to the election board. I've been to a couple of the meetings over there and it seemed like they really have a good working board over there. They uh haven't been any issues over there. And one thing I think I would just like to, I guess, uh inform, you know, the public that don't know about this House Bill four twenty-two. This is not a result of anything happening at the election board. This is just something that the uh representative say that based on some court case to where, you know, the Democrat or Republican Party couldn't just. Appoint someone because they were considered private parties. So I just wanted to put that out there. There's nothing wrong with what's happening. The election board has been working fine over there. Uh we have Mr. Bartlett, he's uh he's on that election board and uh. I think they have a good working relationship over there and, you know, the old adage say if it's not broke, don't fix it. And that was my position. I shared that with uh Representative Burchett, you know, I called in, gave him my feelings about, you know, the bill, but the bill is passed now. So now what we got to do is commission is find, you know, the best way and I think that. Based on, like you said, it's a young board and we're getting right up until the uh precipice of this new election coming up uh in twenty twenty-four. That the board is in place, the board is working well, they don't have to go on a learning curve or anything that. It would be, I think, my in the best interest of this county to lead the board as it is right now. I just, I feel about it. I mean, cause it's, everything is fine over there and, you know, uh we don't know what we can get. We know what we got now.
Yeah, I think one thing that has made without, that the election board has operated without problems, as we've seen around the state. Is that Carlos has done an excellent job of supervising elections. He's done everything right, have no problems whatsoever. So regardless of what happens, you need to stay where you are and let's keep.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate the vote of confidence, but I will say we do have a very, very good board. You know, we don't always agree, you know? And sometimes I don't always agree with the board, but as, you know, um you know, that's not my role. But I think we have a good board. I think the board serves Word County well. And whichever way we go, I want to make sure we continue having a good board. Because I always tell people that, you know, if if the board makes a a big blunder. We'll end up being statewide or national news.
Right, right.
And uh and we wanna, you know, that's kind of, that's not the kind of news we want Word County to be in. Uh but I think we've done a good job and I, you know, like I say, I don't always agree with every, you know, every decision and. Uh but I think the board really thinks to um forward to what's best for the entire community. And I enjoy working with the board, you know, we have. Whichever we all go, we're gonna, we're gonna make it happen.
And you know, I believe that uh back in what, two thousand and six, whenever this election board was formed, I mean, the legislation, I think, under Mark Hatfield at that time.
I'm not sure exactly what year.
I think like two thousand and six or something like that. And uh it's been working fine. I mean, everything has been fine, but like I say, this is just something that come up, you know, uh here in the last year or two and I guess last year or two. But where they say that, you know, you couldn't do it this way, but it still gives this commission a lot of latitude as to how we want to proceed with it. And I think, I think I can speak for the commission that we want what's best in the best interest of this county.
Of our community.
And the city, you know, and I think that's what we want, you know, we don't want to cause any problem, you know, if it's not any problem there, we don't want to cause any problem. And uh like I said, again, want to just repeat, it's sake of signing repetition, we got a good board over there. I know every one of them that's on there and uh seem like they work together good, so I would hope that we could just leave it like it is.
Carlos, is is these terms, you through?
Yes, sir.
Are are these terms now on two-year terms or four years?
Well, what we have right now, even if it wasn't for the legislation, we uh we would have two appointments that would be up starting July. It would be, it would be Mr. Bartlett's position and Ms. Luteen Whitfield's position, okay? And then Dr. Brown is on, um his term would be up in two years, two more years, and then Sean Taylor's in two years. So, you know, the recommendation is to to real point, you know, we 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 nominated by post, one, two, three, and four. Okay, so do, that way we keep up with how people are nominated, when they come off, when they stay on. So so either way, we, the appointments will be, two positions will be for the four-year term, two will be for the four, two-year term. And then once you start that staggered, then everybody will serve four.
Okay. Then if if somebody else from that outside wants to come in and not not belong to the committee, then they could be appointed if we choose to.
That that's up to, that, yes.
Okay.
The legislation, that's up to this board to make the appointments.
Can you remind me, um. The president chairman was appointed by a Superior Court Judge, right?
That's correct.
Correct.
Is that because that the board itself cannot agree on who to hire to appoint as chairman?
Yes, sir. At that time, it was, it was two to two and so um each party submitted um one name. And then it went to uh Judge Gillis and Judge Gillis made the appointment. So going forward, even after this new board takes a seat, this board will need to uh decide whether to real point or, you know, to real point Mr. Phillips. If it's, if it's majority vote to real point Mr. Phillips, then it won't come to y'all, okay? If there's a, you know, if there's a decision to change Mr. Phillips and it's still a majority vote, it won't come to y'all. But if it's a two-two tie and then we'll, we'll, we'll bring a couple of names to this county commission.
So the commission will make that decision rather than the Superior Court, right?
Right, if there's a tie or if the decision cannot be made on the.
Time for it.
New board.
Let's keep bringing that out.
That's right. Okay, anymore discussion on it? I would like for Deborah Giddens to come up and explain, she's the chairman of the Republican Party in Word County. I'd like for her to come up and explain. Uh her viewpoint, sort of matter. Okay, good.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you.
Um so each of you were emailed a letter last, last week along with. Four recommendation forms that each of our nominees uh completed, also sent to the county manager. And our Word County Republican Party met on May second to consider and um. and, um, appoint or elect, I should say, nominees. So we, um, came up with four names. So two of the gentlemen are currently members, so that's Mr. Danny Bartlett is a current member, and his term expires June thirtieth, um, twenty twenty-three. And, um, so had this legislation not been passed, we would have recommended, um, Mr. Bartlett or someone else for this position because his term is expired. So, um, our other member, current member, Dr. Rodney Brown, he was recommended. And so he actually has two more years on a term, uh, without the current legislation being in effect. So, um, but because of the legislation, then all the members are going to be reappointed. And so we recommended Dr. Rodney Brown, and he is a current member. And, um, two other gentlemen, they're here in the audience today, Mr. Larry Capps and Mr. Michael Hargrove. Uh, we also, uh, pointed them as nominees for you to consider for appointment. And, uh, these two, um, other gentlemen, um, have worked as poll watchers. And Mr. Capps as a poll worker. And so they have been involved in the election, uh, process. And our other, our two current members, though, um, have served for a few years. And, uh, so they have the experience of having served already, um, as well as they have, um, participated in training. So I know Mr. Bartlett has, uh, been to several training, uh, sessions regarding of the Board of Elections and the election process, and, uh, Mr., uh, Dr. Brown, um, has also. So our party was able to, um, nominate to you four people. And so at our county committee meeting on May second, um, then these are the four gentlemen that we nominated to present to you for consideration as, um, members of the Ware County Board of Elections. And I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Is any question from the board? Eddie?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Giddens. We'll carry that one over. Any more discussion on it? Not the schedule. All right. Appointment of the Unison Board of Directors. This attaches a letter from Ms. Tephany Henderson, CEO of Unison Behavioral Health, requesting from Carlos Nelson to be appointed to the Unison Board of Directors. Mr. Nelson's term will end on June the thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Y'all got any questions on Carlos being reappointed?
Does, does Mr.?
I believe he stated he's willing to be reappointed.
Carlos, would you come up, would you accept it, stay on it?
Two for one today.
Yeah. You got time to do this?
You want to stay on that board?
Do you want to say? Yeah, I've been on there for, for quite a while, and we just had our, um, our board retreat on Saturday, and I was just named the chairman of the board. And so, um, I'm willing to continue on, they, they do good work in this community in substance, in mental health, and, uh, disability services, and, you know, you know, I'm proud to represent Ware County Board.
Okay.
All right.
So no objection from you?
All right, any more discussion on it, we'll carry it over. All right, we have a county's manager report.
Um, the only thing I have, Mr. Chairman, um, is to just mention that the Bigley Fire Department, um, tennis court bids for renovation are coming in Friday.
Friday?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So I hope we, we have a response.
All right. That's all you got?
Yes, sir.
Okay, commission's on there. Any, y'all got anything?
Shumble it in.
I don't.
You got nothing?
I got one thing, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I got, received a phone call last week from a business owner down on Albany Avenue. And he was actually told it was his business that was on fire, and that's why he left home at ten o'clock at night and went straight down there, because he, he was told it was his building on fire, when actually it was the business across the street from his. And he was just elated at the response time. He said that the fire department had already had the fire out when he drove from his house, and he lives over on the, closer to the, the way on the west side of town, all the way away from this. And, uh, it, it just impressed him that our fire, our fire department got there within the time and had the fire out before he was able to get there from his house. And he drives like a police officer, because he's an old cop, so you can imagine how quick he got to his business.
Yeah.
And he just gave his sincere gratitude to our, our fire department for its professionalism.
Good deal.
Any more?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask some, on the, uh, the agenda item for the, uh, Board of Election appointments, do y'all want that on the regular agenda for decision or for this meeting?
I'm just thinking about that.
I'm not ready.
There's four positions going to have to be appointed, two that's got to be done now, or either we go ahead and appoint all four.
They all need to be done now.
We need to do all at one time?
They all need to be done now because the legislation has, upon passage, changed how appointments are made to that board. So we need to do all the appointments now.
Well, there's four commissioners, if I don't, each one of the commissioners nominate somebody, they won't own the board. That take care of it. It's gonna be hard for five, it's gonna be hard for five people to come up with four names, you know? Hey, how are we gonna do it? I mean, we got?
Well, I think, Steve, if we want to simplify it, we just lead the board like it is, vote, let them go on, and, you know, we'll be done with it. I mean, we got a functional board right now, they're working good, and, uh, I think that would be the wisest and prudent thing to do at this juncture right here.
If you read deep on down into this law, the legislation states whoever in the county had the most in a general election, Republican or Democrat, how, how, explain that part, Jim.
So essentially, it is a little bit, I suppose, confusingly worded, but the idea, and the reason it is that way is I suppose in the future, we could envision that there would be other political parties other than your, uh, Democratic Party and your Republican Party. But essentially, under the way that our current system works, it will always be that, um, the local Democratic Party and the local Republican Party get to make nominations to you all as a board. If there is no local party, such as what, um, Mr. Nelson mentioned earlier, the state party. So like here, you all don't have a local active Democratic Party, so the state Democratic Party has the right to make those nominations. Now, again, those are nominations to you all, you are not required to choose, um, you're not required to choose any of them, you don't have to choose two Democrats, you don't have to choose two Republicans, you don't even have to choose anyone from that list. But the recommendation by the election supervisor, and of course, um, by one of your commissioners, is because it's been functioning, um, in a healthy fashion, is just to reappoint. Whatever determination, um, you make on how to do the appointments, I do recommend that we go post by post and make those appointments so that then it'll be very clear who's serving the four-year term, who's serving the two-year term, so there's clarity in our minutes on, on that. So you'll receive nominations from, or could potentially receive nominations from both the Republican Party and the Democratic Party. And then you take those nominations, consider those if you like, um, and certainly the current board members have been nominated. So you certainly could consider reappointing everyone currently on the board, the four. Um, and then those four members, those four posts will choose the chairman of their board. And if they cannot choose the chairman, the old rule was that it went before the Superior, Chief Superior Court Judge. Under this new legislation, it'll come back before you all to appoint the chairman if the Board of Elections cannot agree to choose their chairman.
Now, what part of that legislation stated where it, Republican Party had majority of the votes in the last general election? What, how did that fill in on?
So all that is, is describing the Republican and the Democratic Parties. So, and I'll read it to you, because it is a little bit confusing, I understand. All right, this is just amending the current act, okay? And it reads, "Two members of the board shall be appointed by the governing authority of Ware County. The political party which received the highest number of votes within the county for its candidate for governor in the general election immediately preceding the appointment of such members shall provide said governing authority with a list of nominations of not more than four people." So all that is, is establishing based on how Ware County citizens voted in the last governor's election, it's describing, you know, either the Republican Party or the Democratic Party. Because we don't essentially have any other majorly active parties that would reach that level. And Mr. Nelson, please jump in if I've stated anything inaccurately.
Okay. So if we point all four of these, like we recommend, well then two of them have to be reappointed in two years?
Two years, right.
It only, they only stay two years, then the other, the other two, they stay the whole four years.
That's correct.
It'd be like staggered terms and?
Okay. All right, any more discussion?
If this is voted on now, would you furnish us a list of who's serving now with the, um, term that they have?
Yeah.
Yes.
So we can fill in blank?
I think that may have been, I was at.
Yeah, it's part of the, it's on the second page of the agenda, under tab eight.
Is it listed by post?
She's got them right there.
Yes, it's, uh, by post, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, if, right now, post one is Dr. Rodney Brown. Terms expire twenty twenty-five, Sean Taylor's terms expire twenty twenty-five, Danny Bartlett's term expires end of, uh, June. And Ludeen Whitfield, the same thing. She's a, uh, post four.
Okay. So that would be the term three and, I mean, three and four would go?
Four years.
Four years.
Four years.
And the other two?
And one and two would go two years.
Right.
Okay. All right. So understand it?
Yes, sir.
It is, it's got you all up with that?
Yes, sir, I, I'll put that on the regular agenda if the commission's ready to, to move on that.
All right, any more commission? Now, I hear a motion to adjourn.
Something with Mr. Chair.
I'll put it in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Come back at?
We got a public here at four thirty anyway.